Call to order. Roll call for the City Council meeting of November 7th, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski. Mr. Rutherford is absent. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
If we could have, as part of our moment of silence, if we could recognize the mass shooting in Pittsburgh at the Tree of Life synagogue, the people who passed away and the people of Pittsburgh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval minutes from the City Council meeting of October 17th, 2018, and bills for payment on November 2nd and 9th, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Ms. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. We do have one repository sale.
There's anybody for repository sale? State your name and address first, please.
Good morning. My name is Julio Ledezma. I'm here for Doris Melendez.
Good morning.
She just doesn't speak. Her English not too good. We're here for the 441 East 14th Street. It's a empty lot.
Yes.
First off, thank you for your interest in this property. Do you live next to the property or what do you plan to do with it?
We used to live next to the property. It's been empty for years like that. And as we live there, we see that it's always like nobody take care of it. And we would like to, you know, take care of it, maintain it nice and clean. We also have an offer to buy the house next to it. So we'll get ahead, you know, just in case, you know, to get that lot.
So what do you plan on using it, pardon me, for parking or additional?
Yeah, just yard, you know, keep it nice and clean.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? That's it. We'll get in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us to citizens to be heard.
Good morning, City Council. Renee Ed. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. I have a couple of things this morning. One is to congratulate councilman on his victory. If you get the same assistant Flo had, you'll have great help. I don't know if you automatically get her or not, but she's been very helpful for us with AIA and all that stuff. Very, very good staff person. Couple of things. One is I have copies of the affidavit that was filed by the city engineer. That is very troubling to me for a certain reason. The affidavit spells out how much the city is claiming it has spent on the McBride viaduct. And in those numbers, there's a particular one that's very concerning to me. It's item four. Item four claims that L.R. Kimball was not paid what we believe was $85,000 for the feasibility study. Rather, this signed and notarized affidavit says they were paid $742,000. Now, for over five years, the public understanding was it was an $85,000 study. So I think it's rather important that we know the facts on this. How much were they actually paid for that study? And I'm asking that someone on City Council please get confirmation of those numbers from the project team, whoever. Because you have to understand what that then says is that for a project that SWAN engineers have to demolish a bridge for $1.45 million, the feasibility studies and the engineering of that project was $1.32 million. I'm telling you, I'm in this business. That fee is way out of whack with what should be paid to do a feasibility study on what amounts to an 1,800-foot-long bridge, 1,170 feet elevated. That's just outrageous. Anybody who does numbers knows how crazy that is. So please, you know, I'm asking verify that. It's public record. We should be able to verify that. My second issue that I want to bring to your attention is I believe today's the day they're going to now close off the viaduct from pedestrian usage. So they're going to take it out of service. What that leaves is between Ash Street and Downing Street, for a mile and a half, there's only one crossing over 12th Street, and that is at the Bayfront Connector Bridge. Now, we have said over and over how dangerous that crossing is because it's a blind corner. The mesh fence along the east side of the bridge prevents a driver northbound from seeing that someone is about to enter that crosswalk. And if the light is starting to get yellow, then they're going to want to beat that because it says no right on red. So it incentivizes them to speed up and beat the red light. So now they're hitting that intersection at an exaggerated speed, not knowing that someone's about to cross. And to corroborate this, I want to bring to your attention our research person, Freda Teppfer, wanted to find out if the school district was going to train the students that have to use that intersection to get to East Middle School on how to use this new signalization system that's been installed at that corner. The response she got was that the school district has designated that too danger of an intersection for their students to cross. So any student that needs to cross that intersection automatically gets a bus pass and is encouraged to bus to school instead of using that intersection. This is a classic example of the results when you don't look at these things ahead of time and you don't care to look at them ahead of time. So I'm asking City Council, please verify the numbers of what we paid L.R. Kimball for the viaduct study and please understand what's happening there. And we're proceeding to put our appeal together to the Third Circuit Court in Philadelphia. And thank you for your attention to these matters. Thank you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number 16047, official ordinance number 402018. An ordinance in accordance with the 2018 City of Erie budget, the sum of $20,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie Police Department. These funds were received via a contribution from the Knights of St. George to be used by the bomb squad. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Bill number 16047, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 402018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 402018, finally by a six, nay zero. Council file 16048, official ordinance number 412018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Erie County Gaming and Revenue Authority. The funds will be utilized to carry out the Wayne Park area improvements, Safe Routes to Schools project, which will be used to repair sidewalk and pedestrian areas near Wayne Park and to install a drinking fountain system and a bicycle repair station in the park. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Bill number 16048, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 412018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 412018, finally by a six, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16049, an ordinance approving the plan of the Erie Sewer Authority for the issuance of an aggregate amount not to exceed $65 million. Sewer revenue notes taxable series of 2018 and sewer revenue notes tax-exempt series of 2018 and setting forth the amount, interest rates, and maturity dates of the bonds. Authorizing the authority to proceed with the plan of financing, authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement, including extending the lease term and the incurrence of lease-rental debt thereby. Authorizing the specified officers of the City of Erie to prepare and certify the debt statement, amending the articles of incorporation of the Erie Sewer Authority, and to do all other acts necessary to carry out the provisions of the ordinance, setting forth the payment of the sewer revenue notes and the source of such payments, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances and providing that the ordinance is effective immediately. By Ms. Allen and seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16049, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16049 by a six, nay zero, Council file number 16050, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, defining panhandling, prohibiting panhandling in certain places and in certain manners, providing a penalty for violating the ordinance, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing the effective date of the ordinance. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16050, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16050 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number 16051, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,200 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, General Obligation Bond Fund 2015. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16051, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16051 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16052, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $3,450 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from Federal Emergency Management Agency for our Close Before You Dose campaign. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16052, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16052 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16053, an ordinance in accordance with the 2018 City of Erie budget, the sum of $400,000 appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie Fire Department in the Fire Equipment Program Fund. These funds will be used to purchase a fire pumper truck. These funds will be used in conjunction with those also appropriated from the Capital Fund. These funds were received by the City of Erie from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Economic and Community Development. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16053, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16053 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16054, an ordinance in accordance with the 2018 City of Erie Capital Fund budget, the sum of $343,603, is appropriated from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie Fire Department. These funds will be used to purchase a fire pumper truck. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16054, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16054 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file number 16055, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for firefighting, training, and rescue equipment. By Mrs. Schaff, seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16055, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16055 by a six, nay zero, on first reading. Council file 16056, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Erie Community Foundation Helping Today grant for the purpose of a problem property database. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16056, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16056 by a six, nay zero, on first reading.
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Are there any separations?
Number four.
Okay.
Into new business.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to designate Poplar Street between 26th and West 29th Street as Representative Florindo Flo Fabrizio Way in honor of his over 36 years of public service and dedication to the Erie community. Discussion.
Madam President.
Yes.
We wanted to recognize Representative Flo Fabrizio for his 16 years as our state representative for the west side of the City of Erie and also his 36 years of public service, including his many, many years over as the county clerk over at the county of Erie. Flo was a true statesman and a strong advocate for Erie and Harrisburg. Many of the transformative projects that we've seen over the past two decades in this community Flo was involved in and was an integral part of. And so I thought it was appropriate that we recognize him. The street that he lived on, right on Poplar, with naming it Flo Fabrizio Way.
Madam President, I just was thinking, there's a lot of different places that have these honorary names and beneath sometime, I mean, I know there's a lot going on in the city, if there was just a little like blurb about all the different places that we've named ways because it's part of our city's history. I mean, you know, from Irma Lindsay to Ron Steele to A.G. Uy, I mean, there's a lot of different things. It would just be, maybe, or maybe it's a story sometime for the city website. Just a suggestion. I mean, Flo's fresh in our minds because, you know, we just recently lost him, but it's a tradition that goes back for probably decades, I would think, so it would just be neat.
Or it's a tag, no, anyway.
Yeah, there's, yes. So it would just be fun, but I know priorities, but still, it'd be fun. Thank you.
All right. Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mrs. Arrington. That'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
We'll start with Mr. Murzky. I know he has a lot to say.
Oh, thanks. Thank you, Madam President. Really not much to report. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and voting yesterday. Record turnout for a off-year election and it was very heartening to see so many people go to the polls and exercise their right to vote. It's democracy in action. It's a participation sport and we need to make sure that people follow their civic duty, but also their civic responsibility. And it was heartening to see so many people do that yesterday. And just on a personal note, I wanted to thank the citizens of Erie, Bell Valley, and Summit Township for their vote. So, and thank you. Keeping it short and sweet.
Liz.
I'm even shorter. No committee report.
Jim.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. No committee reports. Just wanted to mention, did attend the Veterans Breakfast at Third Street Falcons this past weekend and almost a record turnout. Just want to thank United Way for putting this on, Burton Funeral Home for helping get some veterans some transportation to get there, as well as the veterans themselves because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't even have that breakfast, to be honest with you. So also want to mention there is a veterans parade this weekend, Saturday morning at 9:30, starting at Veteran Stadium, naturally going up State Street to the VA Hospital and Center up there. So come on out. I know weather-wise it may not be the best from what they're saying, but come out and support our veterans. And really, that's all I have. Thank you.
As far as committee reports, I do not have any. I think there's a program following the parade that I'm attending. Is it at Jefferson? I'm thinking it's at the Jefferson. So honor a vet this weekend and always by thanking them. There are homeless vets. There's a lot of programs out there helping. If you go online, they're collecting blankets. They're doing things for them. I'm looking forward to attending a meeting on Tuesday here at City Hall on homelessness issues in the City of Erie. So, thank you.
Yes.
Real brief committee report. The airport met recently and you probably saw on the news where they've added three flights, two to Charlotte and one to Chicago, eliminating the terrible Philadelphia service. The airport pointed out that with all the changes and the new aircraft that have been added, even though you don't see a lot of new flights, there's been about 15,000 to 16,000 new seats added availability. They'll be coming back to us shortly for an extension of the lease and I will keep you updated. They're in talks right now with the mayor and they've met with their council liaisons and I'll be approaching you. And on a final note, to paraphrase what all of you said, this week is Veterans Day and I'll be joining my fellow veterans in the parade, rain or shine, Jim. We will be marching on Saturday. I think the services will be held at Jefferson School. They used to hold them at the VA Center. They'll be right after the parade. Take time and thank some of the veterans that are around town that could use the help. I couldn't make the breakfast. I had a previous commitment, but Veterans Day is very important. It's your chance to say thank you to those men and women who wrote a contract many years ago, which entailed many things, some we didn't realize. But thank you once again and remember Veterans Day this week and thank you to all the voters who took the time to vote yesterday and renewed the confidence in those veterans that defended their right to do that. So whichever way you voted yesterday, thank you.
I have no committee report, but I would like to say congratulations, Mr. Murzky, on a job well done. Good luck in your next chapter, your new chapter, and you will be truly missed, but I know you're only a phone call away, but congratulations and thank you for all your help since I've been here.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one of our legislative assistants in the back said, "Bring lots of checks from Harrisburg." So hopefully we'll do that.
I second that motion. Okay. Teresa, you have anything?
I don't have anything, other than next week there'll be an aggregate board meeting, so I'll be able to, at the next council meeting, bring in the quarter results for the pension funds.
Okay. Renee.
Just Kathy Schaff referenced the meeting on Tuesday at 1:30 on homelessness and just wanted to remind everybody that we, there was a resolution from council asking us to convene several of the different agencies that are providing shelter or dealing with the homelessness issue to see if we can attack it in a more comprehensive holistic way. And so we're looking forward to embarking on that.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I can just add, one of the things that came up in the study session as well was that a lot of the panhandling is not our homeless population, but it's actually people who either are in a halfway house or they need extra money because the job they have doesn't have enough. So it's not just homeless people that are doing the aggressive panhandling. Many of these people, I shouldn't say many, some of the people very much have homes. And so I... And so, again, just to reiterate to the community, homelessness doesn't equal panhandling. Oftentimes it does, but there's also a segment that does not. And what, according to Diana Ames, what they've, many of the people who are doing this aggressive panhandling actually aren't their clients. And so, but as we move forward, if you could include that in the conversation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Ed?
I have nothing.
I guess we broke a record, Rose.
I think we did.
It's adjourned our city council meeting.
City Council adjourns at 9:30, 3 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murfsky, Ms. Schaff, Mr. Winarski.